May 19th, 2022, meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Porten here. Mr. Delapietro?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Trebosser?
Here.
And Mr. Velez?
Here. Ms. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: On January 11th, 2022, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Raw Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. Mr. Molnar, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go with the closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed sessions will be regarding personnel matters. Additionally, the Board will receive attorney-client advice regarding the matter of Frost versus Praxair. Any information regarding the closed-session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Trebosser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Please rise for a salute to the flag in a moment of silence. Do I have a motion to reconvene?
Sub-motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. Molnar, second by Mr. Trebosser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Delapietro?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Trebosser?
Here.
And Mr. Velez?
Here.
Will someone make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Motion.
I have a motion by Ms. Perez. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Sedana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Ms. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids received by the Board.
Mr. President, for the 2022-23 school year, we opened the following bids. On April 26th, 2022, IFB 2308 Solar Energy Monitoring and IFB 2309 Solar Panel Removal. On April 27th, 2022, IFB 2301 Athletic Supplies, IFB 2305 Electrical Supplies, IFB 2302 Physical Education Supplies, and IFB 2313 Lumber Supplies. On April 28th, 2022, IFB 2306 Plumbing Supplies, IFB 2307A Window Air Conditioners, and finally, on May 12th, 2022, PSA Bid 8170ORHES21 for Parking Lot Paving and IFB 2311 for Boiler Inspection and Maintenance.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of April 2022.
Mr. President, I present the following reports: Student Registers and Fire Joe Report, Suspension Reports for Elementary and Secondary Schools, Bound Thwart Reports, and Reports of the Attendance Officers.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Dr. Massimino, please introduce the student representative, Ryan Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ryan Gonzalez is a current 12th grade student at Woodbridge High School who is ranked number one out of 415 students. Ryan has an impressive resume of both academic achievement and extracurricular activities, all while maintaining a 4.27 GPA. Ryan has been a member of the Woodbridge High School Marching Band, Swim Team, Jazz Band, and participated in the Spring Musical. Ryan enjoys spending his free time outside of school volunteering at the local library and participating with the Big Brother/Big Sister Program. Ryan has earned prestigious awards such as the American Protege, Internationals, Piano, and Strong Competition, as well as the Mayor's Youth Volunteer Award. Ryan is an extraordinary young man who is kind, respectful, and ambitious. He is a creative thinker who is passionate about engineering. Ryan plans to attend Princeton University and major in Aerospace Engineering in hopes to one day work for NASA, SpaceX, or Boeing.
Good evening, everyone. It is an honor and privilege to be here tonight to present the activity lists for our township's elementary schools, middle schools, and Woodbridge High School. In Schools 4 and 5, students participated in blowing bubbles for autism awareness and bingo for their food drive. Students prepared for their spring concert at Avonel Middle School. The 4th and 5th graders also prepared for their track meet against other elementary schools in the district. Students are currently preparing for their CBL project, and 1st graders are preparing for their reading celebration. In School 9, lessons were held on autism awareness and acceptance. Students participated in the McFood Drive and the track team prepared for this year's track meet. A color run will be held on May 25th at the school. School 9 would like to thank the Sheriff's Department for fingerprinting their students, as well as the Port Reading and Colonia Fire Departments for their assistance in ladder trucks, for the 3rd graders performing their egg drop experiments. In School 14, students recognized Autism Awareness Month by blowing bubbles for autism. Lessons were also taught throughout the month on autism awareness and acceptance. Students in Grades K through 2 visited the Ford's Library, and the school counselor scheduled visits with a therapy dog for students. A pep rally was also held for the 4th and 5th graders who participated in the track meet. Students are currently preparing for their spring instrumental and vocal concert, and the 1st graders are preparing for their reading celebration in June. In School 19, a fundraiser was held for autism in which stress balls and bracelets were sold. Students also participated in the American Heart Association Kids' Heart Challenge and raised $525. Family Math for 3rd graders began in April, and PBSIS held a pizza bingo for students and their families. 4th and 5th grade students also prepared for the track meet. Lastly, 2 students were selected to read their writings at the Evening with Young Writers In School 25, students and staff wore blue on Wednesdays for Autism Awareness Month, and a therapy dog visited the students. Earth Day assemblies were held by the Grand Faloons, and a PBSIS assembly was held outside for all students. The school held its 1st grade reading celebration on April 29th, 2022. Family STEM nights were held for families of 4th and 5th grade students, and family writing nights were held throughout this month for 2nd and 3rd grade students. The 4th and 5th grade students prepared for the elementary track meet as well. The school will be holding a Darshana poster exhibition for students in Grade 3 through 5 to understand Hindu culture and its civilization. 4th and 5th grade students are preparing for their concert, which will be held at FMS. The school's National Elementary Honor Society students will be recognized and inducted prior to this concert. In School 28, the students and staff commemorated autism awareness with a large bubble blowing event. Additionally, approximately 1,700 pounds of infant supplies and clothing were collected and donated to Ukraine. Ms. Granzeno's 3rd grade class designed and sold T-shirts to raise money for the township's animal shelter. The students prepared for testing mode with the help of the following programs: An After-School Review Program, Lunch and Learn, The Win What I Need Program, the SEL Social and Emotional Learning Program, and a Read Anytime Program. There are currently plans for Family STEM and a Science Fair in the works for the end of the school year. At Avonel Middle School, several assembly programs were held, including Ryan's Story, State of Me, a virtual assembly by NFL Hall of Famer James Lofton, and a special visit from Gary White and Kelly Atkinson representing the Montford Point Marine Association. Daniel Harris also visited Avonel Middle School to discuss his role as a Board of Education member. The Student Council coordinated school-wide spirit programs, including school-wide participation in the Have a Heart Food Drive. Mayor McCormick and his team visited Avonel Middle School to acknowledge the students for their participation. Additionally, the National Junior Honor Society and Community Service Club worked together to collect supplies and donations for a variety of charitable organizations, all culminating in a Day of Giving celebration. The Sidekicks Mentoring Program visited elementary schools across the town, and the Colonia High School Heroes and Cool Kids Group visited the 6th grade students. Avonel Middle School held its parent performance by the Performing Arts Club. Other special events at the school included an AAPI Asian American Pacific Islander Art Gallery, Junior Youth and Government Day, a fundraiser benefiting Team LaGrande, the Band and Chorus Concerts, NJHS National Junior Honor Society Induction, an Evening with Young Poets, and the Schoolwide Spelling Bee. We would like to acknowledge 8th graders Vanessa Benson and Joshua Parks, who were selected as panelists for the Middlesex County Youth Bias Task Force Roundtable. We would also like to acknowledge teacher Maria Anan, who was selected as a New Jersey Exemplary Educator by the New Jersey Department of Education. At Ford's Middle School, students created projects having to do with civil rights after reading The Watson's Go to Birmingham. The Landscaping and Gardening Club has completed community service projects, and the Student Council collected and put together 50 birthday boxes for We Feed. The Boys and Girls Cross Country Team has over 50 students participating this year. The Choir and Corral participated in a corral festival along with Schools 11, 14, 25, Woodbridge Middle School, and Woodbridge High School. At the end of this event, all singers joined forces to perform the song "I Sing Because I'm Happy" in honor of Black History Month. Additionally, choir, corral, and showstoppers performed their first spring concert in two years. A Darshana presentation will be held for the entire school to celebrate AAPI Month, and daily announcements will be made. On May 23rd, there will also be a Ryan's Story presentation, which has a longstanding reputation of promoting change and addressing bullying. Lastly, 43 students will be inducted into the Honor Society. We would like to acknowledge Nathan Regis, who received first place in a music competition contest sponsored by the New Jersey Association for Gifted Children. At Woodbridge High School, students and faculty have been celebrating Asian American Pacific Islander Month by completing research assignments in class, reading biographies during morning announcements, and creating bulletin boards around the building. The school also sponsored World Autism Acceptance Week from April 4 to April 8. The Black Student Union hosted a movie night on May 13 for the entire Woodbridge High School community. In honor of National Poetry Month, the Creative Writing One students participated in Representative Frank Pallone's annual poetry program. On April 7th, 2022, 38 students were inducted into the World Language Honor Society. The following week, on April 14th, 68 students were inducted into the National Honor Society. The new ROKAPA Social Studies Honor Society has also recently inducted its first 21 members. The Woodbridge High School Chapter of the Quill and Scroll Honor Society, which was originally chartered in 1957, was reorganized and has inducted 11 students, and the Mu Alpha Theta Induction Ceremony was held on May 18th. Tonight, Woodbridge High School's Class of 2023 is celebrating their junior cotillion at the Delta Hotel in Island. This is the school's first junior cotillion since 2019. Woodbridge High School Dance Classes were nominated to state competition for their Black History Celebratory Dance titled Journey to Freedom. Woodbridge High School Choirs competed in Music in the Parks in Hershey, Pennsylvania on May 14th. Each choir was honored as follows: Concert Choir, first place, superior rating; Travel Choir, first place, excellent rating; Jazz Choir, first place, superior rating; Show Choir, first place, superior rating, best overall high school choir; Juliana Orshakowsky, best soloist. We are also pleased to announce North Jersey Regional Science Fair winners for 2022: Sarah Paharo, first place Behavioral Science; Tara Mahon, third place Behavioral Science; Samantha Gavina, honorable mention Behavioral Science; Jonathan Slahoda, second place Biomedical Engineering. We would like to acknowledge a few more students for their accomplishments. Jonathan Slahoda has been selected as the NJIT Academic Fellowship's second alternate. Sarah Paharo received the American Psychological Association Award. Four-year participation in NJRSF was awarded to Tara Mahon, Katie Nguyen, and Sarah Paharo. Jeffrey Delonvaca, Aria Shaw, and Claudia Marsis have abstracts published this year. Jonathan Slahoda was also accepted into the Governor's School of Engineering and Technology, hosted by the Rutgers University School of Engineering. Lastly, I, Ryan Gonzalez, and Jorrel Rajang were both accepted into Princeton University. To conclude this portion of the meeting, in future news, Woodbridge High School will be hosting a Darshana poster exhibition on May 26. The Drama Club is hard at work on their performances for our spring showcase at the Avonel Performing Arts Center on June 7th, 2022. The end-of-year Drama Awards banquet will be held at the Acacia Hall on June 10th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. That was very impressive. I appreciate it. And if you'd like to stay for the remainder of the meeting, you're welcome to stay, but if you have other business, tend to. We won't be offended if you leave. Okay. I'd also like to recognize Vice Principal of Woodbridge High School, Mr. Perry, for coming out to support his student. Thank you, Mr. Perry. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public, and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agenda being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda item, number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. Seeing none, superintendent's agenda. Okay, Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations?
Mr. President, I have 31 items to present to the Board.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
For the superintendent's agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris. I have a second by Mr. Trebosser. Are there any comments from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
I abstain on Items 30 and 31. Yes to all other items.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebosser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Okay, Policy and Planning, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent presents the following 10 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris, second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. Velez?
Mr. Harris?
I just want to highlight for the public, if you check it out on your agenda's item number three, it's recognizing our 13 individuals who were recognized by their schools as the Volunteer of the Year. They're all young ladies, and I want to extend a thank you on behalf of myself, and I'm sure I speak for many of the other, I think, everyone up here for all of your service on a volunteer basis to your school communities. Thank you very much for what you do and for enriching all of our students' school experience. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Any other comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Trebosser?
I just wanted to highlight item number one. I think that's great. This was the only school in Middlesex County that won a grant, and I just wanted to recognize Mr. Vitari at JFK High School for his accomplishment.
Thank you, Ms. Trebosser. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebosser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Curriculum Agenda, Mr. Trebosser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum presents the following eight items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Trebosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Trebosser, second by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebosser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Finance and Insurance, Mr. Trebosser.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, I present the following 20 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Trebosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Trebosser, second by Mr. Delapietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
I just wanted to make one comment. I want to commend the administration and Mr. Wolfman, in particularly for putting items that he felt had true value in resale and putting them on gov deals. I think that's a true indication of the administration's commitment to making sure we're as fiscally responsible as we can be.
Any other comments? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebosser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Security and School Safety Agenda, Mr. Delapietro.
The Security and School Safety Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Delapietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Delapietro, second by Mr. Trebosser. Any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebosser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Athletics and Extracurricular Agenda, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following 16 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Sedana. Any questions or comments from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebosser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following five items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harris, second by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. Velez?
Mr. Harris?
I want to recognize the administration and the Buildings and Grounds Department. Mr. Pagli is here somewhere. Item number three is addressing, or part of the two items this evening, addressing sprucing up or significantly improving the exterior look of Island Middle School. The facade has begun to fade, and there's some structural issues being addressed by our engineering firm and later on, a construction firm. So I want to thank you for addressing that. It's been an issue, and I know we were waiting for the opportunity and the budget money to address that, and thank you very much. I'm sure the people of Island will be very happy.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Any other comments? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebosser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Transportation Agenda, Mr. Delapietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 14 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Delapietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Delapietro, second by Ms. Perez. Any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebosser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes.
The Cafeteria Agenda, Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Cafeteria Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Motion by Ms. Perez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Perez, second by Ms. Anderson. Any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. Velez?
Mr. Harris?
To the administration, I apologize for catching you off guard with this question. It's not something you have to answer tonight. If you could get back to me on it, just out of curiosity, I meant to ask it. I don't serve on the Cafeteria Committee. Part of, this is a renewal, for the public, this is a renewal of our cafeteria food services company, Pomptonian, who by all accounts have done a good job. Sometimes, the best way to put it is, when there's no news, it's good news. However, part of the discussion back in the winter, we talked about parent surveys, student surveys. Has Pomptonian lived up to that obligation on their contract? I apologize for asking this so late.
Mr. Wolfman?
Mr. Harris, yeah, so far they have done that. It's been very preliminary in what they've done so far, is they've just been kind of getting up and running.
Sure.
But I've been in contact with them and plan to include and improve and expand that program.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, we'll stay on top of that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Treibroisser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes. Personnel agenda, Mr. Molnar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following. Tonight, I'll be moving twenty-one items.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Molnar, second by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibroisser?
I will be abstaining on item twenty in the name of Michael Henderson. Yes, on all other items.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations?
Nothing to say.
Is there any old business that should be brought to attention of the board? Any new business that should be brought to attention of the board? Mr. Harris?
I promise everybody, just one shout out, and now we all want to get home and eat dinner here. Just want to recognize Mr. Passerino. Throughout town and throughout the area, you'll see these Construction Industry Career Day billboards throughout the town. It's an event that's been organized past few years by the Buildings and Construction Trades Industry as a way to attract more young men and young women into the construction industry. So there is a open house or college fair type event taking place on the evening of May thirty-first and during the day of June the first. So first up, Mr. Passerino, on June first, we have already three buses full of our high school students headed to that event. Again, it's a daytime event to introduce students who have an interest in the construction industry. And so thank you for organizing that for students out there. Or parents, if your son or daughter has not yet signed up for that, sort of last call, you contact your high school guidance office about how to get on a bus. And then for parents, maybe you want to check it out yourselves during the evening. That is again, May thirty-first. It's Tuesday. It's right after Memorial Day at the New Jersey Convention and Expo Center. It's right there in Raritan Center. And then again, that's on an evening from four p.m. in the afternoon to eight p.m. I believe it's free and, you know, open to the public. So if your sons or daughters or yourselves have an interest in pursuing a career in the construction industry, please check that out. And once again, thank you to Mr. Passerino and the administration for putting that together, giving our students, expanding their universe. Many students these days feel as though college is the only route to go, whereas, you know, working with your hands and, you know, working outside is just as productive and valuable a career path as any other through the college route. So thank you again for putting that together.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Delapetro?
Just a couple organizations and some individuals I'd like to recognize tonight. First is Avonel Middle School. The teacher, Christina Wyman. Mrs. Wyman has been doing the Fire Bowl. The Fire Bowl is the Fire Information and Rescue Education. It's a competition that the kids do in the school, and they compete with other school districts throughout the state. The program is sponsored by the Division of Fire Safety. Mrs. Wyman has been part of this for, I'm on the board almost eleven years, for almost ten years. Avonel Middle has always participated in this. And I'm looking now, one of our students came in first place. After the competition, the two top schools go to Kane College and they compete against each other in the actual Fire Bowl contest. And it's filmed and it goes throughout the state. So I just want to recognize Mrs. Wyman for doing this. She does a great job. I'd like to get the other middle schools on board, Isla Middle and Ford's Middle. You know, we'll work on that as we go along. But I just wanted to recognize them because they've constantly participated in this. And I had the honor of addressing them at the Fire Academy. They all come down to the Fire Academy for a tour. And I saw her there. And I see her there all the time. So I just want to recognize her for the effort that she does to make this happen. It makes us look good. Another organization I want to recognize is the IFF Local Two-Ninety, the Woodbridge Township Firefighters Association. For the last ten years, the firefighters local that represents Ford's, Port Reading, Woodbridge, Avonel, they sponsor the, it's the students that, two of the students that had, that were severely burned at the Seton Hall fire. The Seton Hall fire was January nineteenth, two thousand. It's the deadliest dormitory fire in U.S. history. Three students died, fifty-eight were injured. Two of the injured, Sean and Al, have a program that they go around the country and speak about dormitory fires and what happened at Seton Hall. I'd like to thank Dr. Lotman at Woodbridge High for, again, this goes back ten years. So Dr. Lotman and through the Firefighters Association and the Fire Prevention bureaus, Dr. Lotman sponsored it and let us use Woodbridge High. We take the kids from, the seniors from Colonia, Isla, and, Colonia, JFK, and Woodbridge. And they sit through this program. It's about, when we first did it, it took about an hour and a half. And when it was all said and done, it was almost three hours. They explain what happened that night, what the series of events was after a basketball game. You know, someone, three, two kids were fooling around. He lit a couch on fire in the hallway. And in the end, three kids, three kids died and fifty-eight were injured. So they come to our school district every year and talk to our seniors and, you know, tell them about dormitory fire safety, you know. We send our kids to college. A lot of them go out of state and are in dormitories or, you know, they're in frat houses. And, you know, when you look at, you know, around the country, when these places burn, how these, you know, children get killed. So historically, you know, after the third grade in the fire service, we don't really have any contact with the kids anymore. You know, once they go into middle school, they move on and, you know, we concentrate on the smaller kids. Well, after the Seton Hall fire, we have these two gentlemen come in and address the seniors because that's the last chance that we get to them before they move on with life. And after you sit through this, there's not a dry eye in the room. So I'd like to thank the Firefighters Association for paying for these two gentlemen to come and educate our seniors. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Delapetro. It's a fantastic program. I'm sure it saves some lives over the years. Okay, any other comments? We will now open the meeting for public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and a section of town from which you reside. Again, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation eleven hundred D. No responsibility given until you have had full opportunity to complete your comments, so as not to interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak.
Good evening. Paul Lund, Hope Lawn. In the past, when I've been here, I've been very mindful of the five minutes. In that effort to get everything I want out, I think I've sometimes gotten ahead of myself. I want to keep it contained and to the point tonight. Before I started teaching fourteen years ago, I noticed there seemed to be a coarsening of society. And I'll give you a little example. I noticed that if I'd go into a quick check or a wah-wah, young people around, the language, the four-letter words would come out freely. And I'd feel offense. I'd say, you know what, come on, older generation here, be mindful of that. And then, as I've started teaching in a high school level, I come to realize that you get to know a student. You don't make these quick judgments and reduce them to that behavior. You know there's more to them than that. They don't mean disrespect necessarily. So depending on my mood, you know, if they use colorful language, I'll say "language," right, just to nip it. If they keep coming back with the language, I might say something, "Come on, guys. I know it rolls naturally off your tongue. You don't even think about it. I know you don't mean offense, but please be more mindful." So I try to disarm them with a little bit of humor. And the reason I bring that up is that being around teenagers for the last fourteen years, you know, you get to appreciate, you know, it kind of makes you feel young again, number one. But you also, you hear how they think and how their mind operates. A lot of times they'll say, you know, "I respect someone if they respect me." It's always a conditional thing. The problem is, sometimes they don't know if they're being disrespected because they're going on feelings. A lot of times adults are trying to correct them, or they'll use a harsh tone, and therefore that's their justification. Well, I was disrespected, when we're only really trying to correct them. And I pulled this up because I think it just, it reminds me that the prefrontal cortex of the teenager is not fully developed. So they go, there's a part of the brain called the amygdala that they rely on, which is where emotions and aggression and things, and they make decisions based on these feelings and emotions. So the reason I come here with concern, in addition to being a taxpayer, paying seven hundred a month roughly for other children to go to public school, in addition to seeing society so divisive right now, and people not able to see each other as people, but as tribes and groups and categories and intersectionality and all this stuff that's going on now, I'm concerned that this social emotional learning, this critical race which has been now modified to DEI, is playing on their emotions, is creating anxiety, confusion, hostility. I've seen young folks who are angry at their parents for deadnaming them and thinking that the parents hate them or don't understand them. Typical teenage angst. But I think there's people out there that are playing on that. There are, I hear reports and I read in the news, maybe not the news you watch, of teachers who are taking sex ed a little too far, making an extracurricular activity, who are getting into topics that have no place. Now, I just, I want to close with this because I'm, again, mindful of the time. I just want to make sure this is accurate. Twenty-twenty New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Comprehensive Health, fifth grade, explain common human sexual development, role of hormones, romantic and sexual feelings, masturbation, mood swings, and timing of pubertal onset, differentiation between sexual orientation and gender identity. I want to make sure these are still accurate. And I guess, Mr. Bush, you could speak to that. And then by the eighth grade, we're looking to identify factors important in deciding whether and when to engage in sexual behavior at eighth grade. Identifying factors that can affect the ability to give or perceive consent to sexual activity, being able to say no, that's probably a good thing. And then define vaginal, oral, and anal sex in the eighth grade. Now, I don't remember that in the eighth grade, and I know we're in different times. My concern is that we are sexualizing the children. We're putting thoughts in there that may not have occurred to them. And we're racializing them and labeling them according to their race, disregarding cultural differences, I would think, to a large extent. But anyway, my question is that, is that accurate? And if parents find that objectionable, that they don't want the birds and the bees to be that graphic in school?
Mr. Bush, would like to address.
Okay.
Your time is up.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I don't know off the top of my head. You know, I don't, I mean, there's lots of curriculum in a given school district, in a state. You said it yourself, sir. I mean, state curriculum, these are standards. We went through this last month. There's a state standard, and we follow those state standards. But we don't, I mean, I know there are professionals here who do this, but we don't like hyper-focus on, you know, the sex education. We also have math and ELA and every other topic that there is. You continuously come to this meeting to talk about sex education. We're following the standards for the state of New Jersey. I don't know if there's anything else to add to that.
Follow the standards.
I will get to a better question quicker the next time I see you. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Bush?
Yeah.
Perhaps it's worth repeating that Mr. Lund's last question, that if parents find it objectionable, they can opt.
Yeah, since the nineteen seventies.
Yes, yes, since nineteen seventy-nine, the right has existed.
I think unfortunately, that memo gets missed. It should be opt-in for those kind of topics.
Yeah, it's part of the curriculum. So if it's objectionable to a family, the parents or guardians can opt their child out. And, you know, I don't think there's anyone that hides that. I think that's very clear, just like there's other activities. If you don't want your child to participate in certain activities, if you have a justification for it. Often, my office is consulted, and we never have an issue with allowing a child to step out of a classroom if they're teaching something that's, for example, objectionable. And there's all kinds of details on that. But with respect to sex ed, it's, there's not, no questions asked.
So any parent that made an objection to the board or superintendent?
To the administration, right.
Would be advised of their right?
It happens in a district of this size, I leave it to the superintendent. It probably happens, you know, dozens of times a day.
I couldn't, Counsel, I couldn't speak to how many we've gotten.
But all the time. I mean, around the state, I'm sure, you know, there's hundreds of kids, maybe thousands of kids in a given school day throughout the state of New Jersey where they, a child opts out and the school district has to allow it.
Just wanted to make sure that it was clear to the public, you know, on that question.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Just one more thing. Last month, if I remember correctly, and Dr. Massimino, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, we abide by the state curriculum standards, age-appropriate. So if the administration does not feel something is age-appropriate, we may cover certain aspects of the curriculum in different manners. The way you make it sound is that that's what we're focusing on. And I don't believe that's the case.
Am I mistaken? Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Good evening. Tom Harris, Ford's, New Jersey. Just going to follow up for a moment on what Mr. Lund had to say. And I appreciate the position that the school is in, mandated by the state. And we know the all-powerful state, and we are in a very progressive state, as Mr. Bush pointed out. So I guess the conservatives worry a little bit more about what's being taught and how. And in that connection, I can see where Mr. Lund is coming from. But how do you monitor down to the actual classrooms, because there's no cameras in there to allow the parents to see, so they're pretty much dependent on a child coming home and finding, saying, gee, I just got taught this, that, or the other thing at school. And that parent may, or other parents may, find it quite objectionable. So while you're following the mandate, how do you actually get down into the classroom level to make sure the teachers aren't going askew on it, as we see? And I'm not saying that's happening in our school, but if it happens in other schools, it can happen here as well. I mean, Seton Hall fire, it's tragic as that was. It showed that there are fallas, oh, sorry, weaknesses in systems that can bring about the type of things we don't want to. And I think that's exactly where Mr. Lund's coming from, is where are the safeguards and, you know, what are the parents' options on that? Moving on, I recently sent to Dr. Massimino and to the secretary, the paperwork, or part of it anyway, that I got from Main Street. And I'm referring to a March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, which is over a year ago, application for a long-term tax exemption application from one-oh-one Ross Street Urban Renewal School. To cut to the chase, they're asking for a redevelopment, tax abatement, so that they can go in and build their apartment complex, that I've spoken to before, on the property right across the street, which is currently used for the teachers. We've had several discussions and a lot of denials about nobody knowing about this. But it goes beyond the pale to think for a moment that McCormick, pardon me, Mayor McCormick was handed, delivered this, as well as it being mailed to John Mitch, the town clerk. And yet, this didn't get to the school back at that point in time. And I understand that Dr. Massimino was not here at that time in the position that he is now, so he may not have known. But I also have a recording from Mayor McCormick at a prior town council meeting where he said, "I did have discussions with the then-current superintendent and his administration." So again, how that would not have reached members of this board, all of whom, I believe, except one, were on the board at that time in history. So really, the question is, what is happening with Ross Street? Why would you sell it? At what price would you sell it? And how does that benefit the children, the teachers, the staff at this school, or the community by allowing a ninety-four unit being built over there and relegating the teachers over to a new parking lot that's going to be five stories high? I believe, if I heard Mayor McCormick again correctly, the school is going to be expected to pay some portion of the cost of building that parking lot for the use of its teachers. And they'll have to be allocated. I'm not sure how they'll allocate the parking for them. The other thing is, I had submitted an Oprah, which got bounced back to me, and I'm not sure where I'm going to take it now. But basically, my questions were, all correspondence between the school district, John McCormick, and the McCormick administration at all, related to the current inspection, testing for radon and other possible contaminants at Colonia High School. Point two was the district's record for testing for radon and possible other contaminants at each of the district's schools between January first, nineteen ninety, and I realize that's going back thirty years to, actually, over thirty years, to April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. In both instances, I get back, your request is overly broad and therefore is rejected. I'm not going to cite all of it. I'm sure Mr. Bush at his office or himself spent quite a time citing all the reasons that you don't want to answer it or that you have a legal reason to get out of answering it. But the real point is, why can't you answer it? It's just that simple. There's correspondence that must have gone back and forth between this administration and the administration at one Main Street. Why can't you produce it? Why are you hiding it and using legalese? And I can go, I can take this to my lawyers, too, and see if we can't approve upon it and come back and keep digging and keep submitting the Oprah's, which wastes everybody's time and money. But if that's what we have to do, I've done it before, and I'll do it again. But the same thing applies to the testing. We are deeply concerned at what's happening at the high school. I don't know if there's any reports out yet. I've not heard of any that clarify how bad the situation may be, or if in fact, there is even a situation. And I mentioned that last time. And I'm hoping that the parents don't panic about it and that they give the time to come in and let's respond to it, not react to it in a, you know, in a positive manner that does not disrupt the education of children.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Unfortunately, you're out of time.
Thank you. I'll wait.
Dr. Massimino?
So, Mr. Harris, I'll respond to what I can respond to. In terms of the testing at Colonia High School, the environmental company has sent all the findings to the Department of Environmental Protection. As we stated in all of my correspondence, they are the state agency that would review that, give us their take on the findings, and make any recommendations if needed. So we expect those results shortly. I mean, we're eager. I would love them tomorrow. I don't think we're going to get the GEP. They're a rather big agency. So we're expecting them soon. With regard to the other testing, nineteen ninety to two thousand twenty-one, I'll defer to Mr. Bush because that's thirty-two years of testing records that was requested. So I'll defer to Counsel.
Mr. Harris, you're very well familiar with Oprah, and I know that because you make Oprah requests to this district all the time, for years you have. And that's your right as a citizen to do that. But to suggest somehow that we are, you know, wasting taxpayer dollars, I mean, there's been, first of all, there's a legal reason why you were not given the documents. No one's hiding anything. In fact, this district has gone above and beyond in attempts to make sure that it continues to communicate with the residents and the people of that community in particular with respect to the concerns that we all have and share at the high school. But I mean, if you want to talk about wasting, you know, taxpayer dollars, there's been thousands of pages of Oprah requests that you've made to this district over the years that you haven't even picked up. You know, you've made the request. We've gone through throwing these documents together, these records together, and they've sit, they've sat. I mean, I'm not talking about this week, but there's been moments where we've done that. We've put the time into getting your records for you. And then there's, you know, thousands of pages of records that have sat there, and you never picked them up. So, you know, I think, I think we've come to the point now and an understanding that when you make record requests, we fulfill them. And sometimes in fulfilling those responses, we provide you with all of the records you've requested. Sometimes, we can't provide you with some of the records you requested. You know this well. So please, I'm just asking you, as a member of the community who knows how serious we take this rule of what records are available, what they're not, you could probably teach an entire seminar on Oprah with all the work that you've done with this district in particular on Oprah. No one's hiding anything from you. But we can't provide you with records that are not available or that are overbroad because this staff has lots of work to do, well beyond anything we've even just discussed in this meeting tonight, which is a lot. There's lots of work to be done. The staff is constantly working at School Street to The staff is constantly working at, at School Street to, to ensure that the school district is following through what its obligations to this community and to, to the students. And, you know, to suggest somehow that we're supposed to go through, how many years, Dr. Massimino, 32 years of records and just to provide those to you? That does, you don't just pull that from a, from a, from a file. That takes a really long time. So we're asking you to narrow it, and if you need to speak to your attorney about doing that, narrowing it, and then there's records that are responsive, go right ahead and we'll do our best to comply.
Well, I appreciate that.
And your, and your time's done, sir.
No, you didn't answer the other question either.
There's also another, there's a point that I, that you referred that I made before about the fact that New Jersey is a progressive state. I just want to be clear with you, I wasn't suggesting progressive like progressive politics, like liberal conservative politics. I was talking about progressive. New Jersey's always been ahead of the curve. It's been regarded in the United States as a matter of legal theory and philosophy as being a, a state that tends to do things before others do and lead the way. So I think that's what we were talking about with respect to progressive. You also referred to this concept of, of, you know, teachers being subject to, you know, the, the idea that, that teachers may somehow, you know, go in a particular direction that, and how do we monitor them? Our teachers, not just in this district, but again, everything's always statewide in, in New Jersey, but our teachers are subject to some of the strictest, you know, requirements, standards, reviews, evaluations. You speak to any teacher, you know, I, I'm sure there's some teachers in the audience here tonight, if you take, speak to any teacher about what it's like to work in a public school, they, they have to stick to the curriculum, and if they don't, they have ways of ensuring that those teachers come back to the curriculum. There's tons of accountability. So the suggestion that somehow in the context of, of, of an area of curriculum that apparently you and maybe some others are concerned about, that the teachers are going to, you know, fly off the handle and secretly teach kids something they're not supposed to teach, it's frankly outrageous. And I just, I'm going to say that on behalf of the district and.
I was quite clear of that.
Your time is done, sir. Thank you.
Why do you do that? Every time somebody starts to respond to you.
Because it's not, it's not a back and forth. You're not a member of this.
And you did not answer the question about the Raw Street parking lot.
If you have anything else, you can email the board.
Sir?
If you have any other questions, you can email the board.
I will, and I'd like to know where that stack of documents is, because I have no, know of none that I have never picked up.
Thank you, Mr. Maris. Your time is up.
Request the Secretary to get those for me.
Good evening. John Vataric Woodbridge. I guess a lot of things be said tonight and today, and we all know, living in this town for a long time, the times are changing, the people are changing, and we do understand because of the, because of element of the people that come into this town, it's not the people that were born here, most of them grew up over here. So they got to get adjusted, especially foreigners. We know how long it takes, it takes time. But again, I don't think the German, young man that was presented at the, the, tonight, that he needs any kind of a, what you call, to get hired or something. He's at the top. Kids need attention, they want to be somebody. If they can't be number one, they will do something just for the attention. So we got to understand that. But again, we cannot bend down to the level to agree with him. And I don't think it would be kind of a, a, nice to take somebody else that's responsible parent, or anybody else that you get a kid come from the school, and guess mom or dad whatever learning in school, that our babies are made. I think the time the parents will tell them, somebody will tell them. But anyway, I know what you're going through, nobody condemns you or the teachers, but again, I want to bring a little bit more about something else. Dr. Massimino, when we go to Town Hall, we hear from John Hegarty, his opinion on Colonial High School. We got here from the McCormick, Mayor McCormick, what he does about it. I think it would be more appropriate, it probably people would really like to hear from you, what's how far, like you said, to how far you got, what's the next stuff again? And that's what people need. I don't think John Hegarty is qualified to talk about what happened in Colonial High School. He just a PR of a mayor. What is it, just a, like we look at a newspaper, it's just not coming from, this is very important things that yourself, school board, you got to speak for school. This is not talking about other stuff. This is talking about our kids. Now again, Tuesday night, there was another issue came up, which I kind of blew my mind, I never heard it before, but the mayor was, we were talking about the power plant in KESB, that a lot of people objected. And that kind of mayor blows the school, he said, why would you rather have the power plant, or would you have the, what you call, the, the nuclear, what, something about nuclear, or what it was, the, the contamination? Now, question is, if that contamination came up to KESB, they're supposed to make park, where it came from? The people talk a lot, it came up from Piscataway, in 1940s, they're making some fuels, what they call a nuclear bomb, it was manufactured there. How do we know some of this stuff, it's a radiation, then it come up to our schools someplace? And my question, I never heard before, let's talk about contamination, but not radiation. So the question would be, let's find out. But Dr. Massimino, you should speak for the, for the teachers, you should speak for the children. We want to hear from you. We just don't want a second or third hand, because maybe somebody wants to get publicity in what you do or recognition, but it's you. You should be under school, and you can do it. But that's what our problem is, that let's serious things, because we just don't know, and people want to know what's going on. And I think next to that, the DEI, that's probably the most important thing now, in us for Colonial High School, and Mr. Lupino, I believe, that's all what I read, all the stuff from him, Lupiano, he just said that he found 110 people plus, they went to Colonial High School and they have certain kind of a cancer. He didn't say they got it from what or how, but they went to high school. So that doesn't mean it's anything with schools or anything else, that's all he said. And it, it's a serious thing, it's a lot of people. So I hope in God it's not a, any school or any town, but again, it's let people know, because it's kind of a serious and people anxious to find out. I don't want to take any more time, I think you guys are doing a great job, but again, we go back for what, I know somebody want to tell you what to do, but I think we give you the powers that take, as a people that work for you in, the people support the school board, take the reins in your own hand. People respect the whole town, that if you do.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vataric. Time's up. Dr. Massimino?
Mr. Vataric, the mayor speaks to the town, I speak to the school community. So there are two union reps in the back room, one of them teaches at Colonial High School, and he can confirm that every time I've received an update, and I've probably sent a half a dozen letters to that school community, they've received it. Because that's who I speak to, I speak to the school community. I don't speak at the town hall meetings because I'm not the mayor. The mayor speaks to the entire township, I speak to the school community. Every meeting that has taken place with the Department of Health, the Department of Environmental Protection, representatives from Governor Murphy's office, Congressman Pallone's office, the CDC, the EPA, I have been in that meeting with the mayor. So if the mayor shares it at the town council meeting to let the citizens and residents know, and I share it through correspondence with the Colonial High School community as well as board meetings, my belief is we are both doing our jobs. So I, I have not lapsed at any point in communicating with the Colonial High School community because I am part of the Colonial community. They're my neighbors, they're my kids' teammates. So I haven't missed an opportunity to keep them informed because I want nothing more than them to be updated with the same information I have.
But again, you just said you, all the meetings with the mayor, but again, why would the mayor get a news coverage?
Okay, Mr. Vataric.
You said yourself.
Thank you.
Or John Hegarty, thank you.
No other comments, Mr. Vataric? You have, you want to continue, you can email the board.
Good evening. My name's Jim Springsteen. I grew up in Fords. I quite honestly wasn't expecting to come up here, so I'll keep it short and sweet. I'm a Woodbridge High alum and I just want to attest the experience I had with this, with the teachers and especially with the, with the sex ed, sex ed program, always felt appropriate and never crossed the line. So I know there are people who have concerns about that. I, I never experienced that at Woodbridge High. And as an educator myself, I can again attest to the fact that we do have state standards and we do adhere ourselves to those, and there, I've never met a teacher who deviated from those standards. And to, to just kind of put people, people's minds at ease. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Springsteen.
Good evening. My name is Abhijit Deshpande, and I live in Iceland. I represent Hindu Swamshak Sangh, HSS USA, and I'm here to talk, give you some updates about the continued collaboration that we have with the school district. First of all, I want to thank all of you for giving us the opportunity to work with the school district, especially the DEI and entire school community, to better the cultural competency. As part of the various initiatives that we take, we have created a brand new exhibition called Darsana. You have heard Ryan talking about it when he was explaining various activities that he did. So Darsana literally means it's a reflection of seeing yourself reflected. And this exhibition talks about the Hindu culture, the contribution of Hindu thought into art, science and the eternal pursuit of happiness. Now, as part of that, I'm pleased to invite all of you for this particular event that we are hosting in Woodbridge Public Library in the main building on June 18th. It starts at 10:30. We have already taken this particular exhibition to the schools. There are six schools that have currently signed up for it. In fact, today we completed our first Darsana in school number 25 with the grade three, four and five students, and we are extremely excited about the response that we have received. There will be additional, one elementary school, three middle schools and one high school that has signed up for this, and we are really, really looking forward to it. The culmination of all of this will be on June 18th, and that's where I want to invite all of you to come to. The next important update is we have celebrated our annual Teachers Appreciation Day. We call it as Guru Vandana, which is in English, if I translate, becomes Teachers Appreciation. It happened on last Sunday, and we invited 14 teachers, our students invited 14 teachers to that particular event, and we were extremely happy to, that they came with their families and gave us the opportunity to offer our reverence to them. So again, thank those teachers for that. So considering all of this, I again invite you for the June 18th event. This event is specifically for the officials of the district and the township. So we have invited mayor, mayor's office, police department, health department and various other officials. Woodbridge Public Library is our sponsor here, and we are extremely excited to build that collaboration with the library. So again, thank you and see you on June 18th.
Thank you, sir, for your community involvement. We will, we appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Sedana?
I was going to wait till the next meeting, but I, I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Pastoreno and Dr. Massimino. We, I had a presentation with them for the Save Soil movement, that's something that's happening, happening on a global scale. And we, I was invited, I had the honor to be invited as a citizen of the township, not a board member, to one of the schools to speak about it. And Mr. Pastoreno was there, and it was a great event. In fact, May 24th, we're getting together and planting some trees and doing some work outside Meadow Park Terrace School. So I just wanted to thank the administration for listening to me and allowing me to participate. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sedana. Any other board comments? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Sedana, second by Mr. Delafitto. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry.